Well, good morning and welcome to this second session of our Parents Reconciling Network, gathering us together for conversation. My name is Emily Bagwell and I'm the Resource Manager for Reconciling Ministries Network. My pronouns are she/her/hers. And I'm thrilled to be gathered with a couple of the board members from Parents Reconciling Network, which is an extension ministry of reconciling ministries that do a lot of work to help provide support for families and for children of LGBTQ community. And we are just diving into deeper conversation. We had an initial virtual porch, which you can find on our YouTube channel. And today, we are just going to continue with one another. And we have, our main presenter today is going to be Janet Duke. And so I will let Janet introduce herself, give us a little bit of context for the topics we'll be doing, covering today. I want to go ahead and say that we are recording this first part of the session. So, hey to everybody who's joining us later on, who are not able to join us for the time of gathering, because we want to invite people in to be in conversation and community with one another. So, we hope that this will be helpful to you. We are going to have another session on October 29th. That's two weeks from today. The same time, it's Thursday at noon Eastern time. And we invite you to sign up through Eventbrite. Those links will be there if you didn't already do so. This is meant to be a conversation with one another. So, the chat is open. You're welcome to leave questions or comments, topics that you would appreciate being addressed or covered. This is a learning and growing together that we want to do. And so, we would love to include your thoughts, your curiosities as we go. So, letting a couple of people in through our waiting room. I think everybody's getting on now. Welcome to those who are just joining us and we're about to get started. And I'm going to turn it over to Janet. But if you have any questions throughout the time, there's going to be some intentional pauses for conversation, but it's helpful to us to know that you have something to say. So, you can either raise your hand if you have your video on and we can see you, or throw something in the chat. And I'll be monitoring that as we go. And then, at the end, we are going to stop the recording, because we understand that you may have some questions that maybe you don't want to be recorded and posted out there for everyone to see, but would appreciate having some time and room for some conversations. So, we have three of our board members who are with us, helping to facilitate this. As I mentioned, Janet Duke will be leading today's topic primarily, but we also have Jim Waugh. Jim, if you'll wave. He's the Chair of the Parents Reconciling Network. Joy Leet, if you'll wave. She is also with us and on the board. And so, they are happy to stay after we stopped the official recording, so that you might just have time to ask an additional question. So, know that that space will also be provided as a part of today's session. But we'll go ahead and get started. So, Janet, if you'll give us an introduction of who you are, where you are, and then you can get started with today's topic.
So, I'm Janet Duke, and my pronouns are she and her. I am in Austin, Texas. And as Emily said, I'm on the Board of the Parents Reconciling Network. I also am the founder and Board Chair of a nonprofit that actually kind of spun out of the work of the Parents Reconciling Network. That organization's called the Strong Family Alliance. And some of the material, quite a bit of material that we cover in these sessions is also included on that website. So, I'm glad to be here, and I'm going to do a screen share. And I can't, I don't think I'll be able to see the people here, but Emily's going to grab me if someone has a question. And I'm happy to take questions. I kind of get my momentum going. But if you want to talk, I'd be happy to talk. Let me try to show the screen. Sorry, trying to get into slideshow here. Okay. So, my topic this morning is really about the coming out process for LGBTQ and also for their families. And there's a process, a lot of people don't think about it, but there's a process on both sides. And I'll talk about first one and then the other. One of the things I would say, coming early on, is a lot of times, parents don't recognize how long a journey that LGBT person has been on. That it may be news to us when they come out, or to family and friends, but that individual has probably been thinking about this for years. And individual experiences of coming out, both for the youth and for parents or family, can really differ. But these two presentations give you one way of understanding those respective journeys. Before I start about what it's like to come out as an LGBT person, I want to kind of level set on how hard it can be. We're so immersed in society that we often don't realize how pervasive role messages are. And I've just put up a few here about boys and girls, pink and blue. You know, "I'm good at math," or "I'm all about superheroes," or "I'm a caretaker," and "mommy's little helper." And the role models being different, there tend to be leaders for men and supporters for women. And men tend to be measured by their actions, and women by their beauty. And there's kind of this overarching thing that boys do and girls watch. And these messages are so pervasive. And if you don't think they are, I would just give you a one-week challenge. For the next week, every ad you see, television, printed media, billboards, look at them. Who's in them? Who's leading? Who's acting? And what are they doing? Because these are messages our children hear, even at very early ages. So, they know what is quote "norm" in society, and they know if they fall into that or not. So, that is the challenge in the whole coming out process. For an LGBTQ person, one of the first stages is self-discovery, that they begin to realize that they either have same-sex attraction, or that their gender identity is completely different from what the world may perceive them to be. And this can cause some pretty serious emotional conflict. They can worry about not being quote "normal." Lots of times, often for years, there's an attempt to just conform. You can think of it almost as passing. But they may later, as they begin to, especially if they encounter a lot of negative messages from the family, or from their church community, or from their town, they may really try to overcome it. They may really try to suppress it and not be that, just because it's a load. This period is often referred to as being in the closet. And if you've heard, you know, they've come out of the closet, this is when they're in the closet. They're not public. And that privacy can be very intensely maintained. They can be, especially if they're trying to pass, they may be dating normally. You know, there may be a gay person who's dating the opposite sex, and you know, keeping everything as normal as they can. But often, they're starting to seek information increasingly now. It's online. But even before, they would try to find out more information, understand. It's very common to see behavioral stress at this period. I hear a lot of parents say, "She was so unhappy," or "He was always depressed," or "Always angry." And "I didn't understand what was going on." And very often, it's about the struggle that they're having internally to reconcile who they feel they are with how the world thinks they are. And this is often historically especially maintained until independence. And that's, you see that in the large number of individuals who come out as an adult. Interestingly, the age of coming out has dropped through time. About 20 years ago, it tended to be in the mid-30s, and then it dropped into the 20s. And now, the average age of coming out is around 14 to 16. So, that's a big drop. And what that also means is that the young person is still living at home with the family for a longer time. So, family support and understanding becomes even more important. A second stage is when they begin to disclose to others. They're going to come out to somebody. And normally, they'll choose someone who's safe. And it could be a family member. And I would say, if you're the first person that your child comes out to, I hope you will feel very honored, because they chose you as a person they felt would be most safe to come out to. However, it could be a friend. Sometimes they confide, if they know an LGBTQ person, they may confide in that person. And increasingly, you'll see online persona created, or they'll text, or have an online friend that they come out to first. This whole process can be very difficult, and it's not uncommon for them to try to manage their emotional risk by sending up what I would call trial balloons. They might raise the subject of maybe a gay friend they know at the dinner table and just see what's the response of the family. Or they may listen to gay jokes that are being told and see what's the response around me. There's a lot of ways that they're trying to read the signal on, if I come out, how is this going to be accepted? Rejection is really a tough thing. If they've decided they're going to do this, and they face rejection, sometimes they'll go back into the closet. They may say, "Oh, I was just joking," or, you know, "I just was going to get a rise out of you." But whatever it was, it can lead to deeper privacy and even greater emotional struggle. Those first few efforts to come out are so important, particularly if they're to family. However, if they get acceptance, if they get positive, "Tell me more, I didn't know about this, talk to me" kind of things, it can be deeply relieving. If they've been struggling with this, if they've been worrying about this for a long time, to be able to talk to somebody is a huge relief, especially when they get a positive response. And it can lead to increased self-esteem and better self-acceptance. And in particular, and I'll talk about this, but the parent response is particularly important. And it literally can affect the whole rest of the life of that child, depending on how the parent reacts. Disclosure will extend to others over time. It could become quickly, it could become gradually for trans kids. Once they begin transitioning, there's not a lot of privacy. But for LGBT kids, they may have a long, long process of coming out. And that happens over time at their pace. And I'll talk more about that, but they get to choose whom they come out to, when and how. The next level they kind of get into is beginning to socialize, find other LGBTQ individuals. They want to connect, and this is a way of ending their isolation and their feeling of estrangement. It can also really help with their positive self-image. They get some validation. There are people like me out there. They can begin to get openly more educated and informed. They also have the support of others with shared experience. And all of us have had the situation of going through something hard, and then talking to someone who's had a similar experience, and how comforting that can be. In addition, at this time, positive role models are really, really important, because they're kind of beginning to view themselves differently in the world. And this gives them ways to look at possibilities for the future, to start building new dreams for themselves. And these role models could be personal, or they could be in the media, they could be in movies, books, magazines. But the idea that there are people out there that are doing well and having good lives that are LGBTQ is really important for them to get exposure to. The next stage is really where they begin very positively to identify as who they are. It's about feeling good with who they are. It's a lot about personal understanding. And they'll, at this point, a lot of parents see, in the previous stage, where they just start trying to find LGBTQ connections, they'll just kind of grasp at anything. At this point, they tend to be much more about seeking positive relationships. It's not just anybody. They really want to build a connection. They want to have friends that they like, that like them, that are good friendships. And they tend to develop more and more sense of peace and fulfillment as this goes along. And they become very accepting of their attractions and of their relationships, and can see that their views are a normal expression of human love. And they're beginning to live into an identity that feels very normal and very true for them. Stage five is what is sometimes referred to as full integration or full acceptance. And one of the hallmarks of this is a general openness and kind of a non-defensive attitude. This is just who I am, and I'm okay. This can manifest in a lot of different ways. Some people are out and proud, is the phrase you'll hear, right? They're very open about their sexuality or gender. And part of that is an effort to end invisibility that they may have experienced so far. Others may be quietly open. They may not announce, but not hide. If someone asks them, they'll reply. But they want to be available to support others, and they want to have a community. And often, this is a spectrum, and it can range all of them down the spectrum at any given time. You know, they may be very open in certain arenas and prefer to be more private in others, where they feel they may be facing difficult challenges. So, it's often situational, and it can vary. It's really important, at this point, that they are able to develop affirming relationships. And that's in a lot of places. It's with family, it's with friends, it might be romantic. Hopefully, it's with a faith group, or they're a larger community. But this is so important to having a big impact on their personal growth and full Stage six is really the lifelong journey. And I think this is a really important thing to know, is that coming out doesn't just happen once. For most LGBTQ people, it happens over and over and over again. They're always having to figure out, "Do I, what do I need to do in this particular situation?" Because there's this social baseline of, normally, society is going to be a certain way. And they constantly have to think about, "To whom? In what circumstances? And is there a need for me to say anything?" And one way to think about this, if you're heterosexual, how often do you tell people that you're heterosexual? Right? I mean, you just never have to say it, you never have to talk about it. That's not necessarily the case for LGBTQ people. So, they have to think about relatives, pardon the typo there, relatives and friends and teachers, when they start dating. How do I handle that? Teams, jobs, coworkers. I've talked to young people that work in a place where everybody knows that they're gay. I've talked to young people that work in places where nobody knows, and that's just the way they prefer it. Community organizations, their churches, it's a constant decision. And they get to choose where they are at any given time. And hopefully, they're able to live as openly as possible. But they have their own decisions to make about what that looks like for them. It's such an important step in self-acceptance and in their physical and emotional and spiritual growth. And the one thing I want to emphasize is, the decision to come out to anybody is always that individual's decision. One of the things that I see parents struggle with is wanting to call their sister, or tell somebody, or whatever. And that is not our choice to make, that's the individual's choice to make, because that's going to affect them. My sister is also my child's aunt, right? She has a relationship with that person too. So, she gets to decide who knows what and when. And if they're very open, then it's not an issue. But if they're struggling or coming along gradually, you have to honor that and support I just want to talk for one second before we move on about the cost of not coming out. And I don't know if you have seen this TED Talk, but I highly recommend it. It has nothing to do with LGBTQ. But Brene Brown is a researcher on shame, and this is just one line from her book and from her presentation, that shame needs three things to grow: secrecy, silence, and judgment. And when people don't feel they can come out, that's what they're facing: secrecy, silence, and judgment. And it's so important that they be able to come out, come out safely, and find their place in the world. So, sometimes I have parents ask me, "Why didn't you even tell me? Why didn't you even tell me?" It's so important to know, they have to be able to be who they are, and this is why. They have to be able to find their place in the world. That's important for us to understand, it's so important. Before I move on to the parent thing, if there's any questions or discussions, or anybody wants to ask anything, I'd be happy to talk about that. This is not, you know, not everybody goes through this in the same way, but can give you some ideas of what your child or your family member may have gone through in the course of becoming more and more open. I can't see everybody, but okay, I'm going to go on. But please, either later or now, I'd be happy to talk more, or take questions. One final thing I want to say about coming out is just kind of understanding that this is, if someone comes out to you, this is such a gesture of love and respect. The number one thing I hear young people say about why they come out is they want to be honest. They want to be honest with those they love and those that they respect. They want to be understood. So, if somebody comes out to you, I hope you can appreciate what they are doing and the kind of sharing that they're making in doing that with you. Also, that this is an act of courage and vulnerability. Unfortunately, in our society, not everybody's going to be receptive. And they want to be accepted, but they're risking rejection and coming out. And they also know that this can be a possible break in their family life. I assure you, if you have a young person that's coming out, they probably know that 40% of all homeless youth are LGBTQ. They know people get thrown out of their homes. They know they can have horrible reactions in their family. So, for them to come out to you is a very brave thing, and it speaks not only to their bravery, but to the relationship that you've established with them, and the love and trust that they have in you. And then finally, just remember that coming out is their attempt to live authentically, to just live as genuinely as they can about who they are and who they love, and that we can do a lot to help them find that best place in the world for them. So, let me talk now about the journey for parents. I'm going to focus mostly on parents, but in some ways, these things can affect other family members also. But one of the things that you see with parents is, there are often stages to... I just wanted to mention this one particular quote, and I actually put the reference here on to the website, but there's a researcher named Dr. Caitlin Bryan at San Francisco State University, who's done years and years of research about the coming out process and what helps and what hurts. And this quote is from her, that "The moment of coming out to parents is a crossroads of the life of an LGBTQ person, and that parent response is a major predictor for the child's future drug use, homelessness, and suicide attempts." You know, their journey and our journey are very related, and it's just important to know how important your response is. Our journey as parents is a struggle to balance our emotions with the need to be a good parent. And sometimes, those are in conflict. But one thing I would say is, regardless of this, you are never going to be a perfect parent. I think every parent knows that. So, give up on perfection and try to be the best parent you can. And you do that by understanding all you can about your child, and what they're, where they are in their journey, and then understanding yourself and dealing with it in as positive a way as you can. So, the parent journey has stages as well. It can be a shock when a child comes out. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. Even parents who've wandered along the way can be overwhelmed. And this is the beginning of a journey for them, and that's part of why it affects them that way. And I want to point out that even LGBTQ allies can struggle. One of the comments I've heard that I think of over and over is this man, young man, everybody's young to me, but a father of a teenage son. And he said, "I'm a member of the Human Rights Campaign. I've been to marches. I'm an ally. But when my son came out to me, I was terrified." And the thing is, no matter how positive you are, now it's personal. And sometimes, allies are even more aware of the risk and attitudes that their child may encounter, and that can be scary. And even parents who say, "Oh, I've always known," it's no protection, because that's the beginning of a long process of really understanding what your child is going through and how you can parent them in the best possible way. So, this is something all parents go through. There are definite stages that parents experience, but one thing I want to say is, this is far more jumbled, maybe, than what a young person goes through. They may not happen in any order. Some parents just skip others altogether. Sometimes it goes fast, sometimes it goes slow. My experience is, the last, that sometimes you can return to an earlier stage. I have found that something would happen in my child's life, and it would jump me back into something that I thought I had gotten completely under control. So, I think it's important to allow yourself time to work through feelings and regain your balance, and just know, this is a process, and it's not something that happens overnight. So, one of the main reactions often is denial. And you'll hear parents say, "I just can't accept it." Often, even though there may have been early hints or trial balloons from the child, they just haven't gone there, or they don't want to make assumptions. And a lot of times, they're just afraid, right? They don't want, they're afraid of what it'll mean for the child or for the family. And a lot of times, you'll hear, "Oh, it's just a phase, you'll outgrow this," or "They're rebellion," or "This is experimentation," or "They just have to be different." And I just want to say how essential it is to know, you need to take them at their word. Coming out is not easy. This is not a joke. This is not something that they just thought up to do. It can be very difficult, and it really requires facing, for them, what it might mean to their family and for you. What does it mean to your child, and what does it mean to your family? So, even though you may have that initial reaction, just know that's something you really have to work your way through, because it is very unlikely that they're just doing this as a passing phase. Grief is something that a lot of parents experience, and grief is nothing but a sadness, because we feel a loss. Sometimes, it's the idea of, gee, I thought, I've heard parents say, "I thought I knew my child. I'm just so confused." It can also be the loss of an anticipated future. I know, all of you that are parents know, just even before your child is born, you have these dreams and hopes and visions and what's going to happen in the future. And all of that may feel changed. So, sometimes you have grief over the disappearance of things that you had envisioned for the future. But I would say, time can bring changes. It's really, really important to give yourself time to adjust. Acknowledge what you may be feeling, but don't wallow in it. And the thing I think is most helpful is, like many changes we face in life, over time, you can build new dreams and new hopes. And some of them will transfer. Like, a lot of times, I hear families say, "Gosh, I just wanted her to have a good husband or a good wife." And what happens is, that can transfer and become what I want, is for them to have a good partner or a good spouse. I don't have to give up that dream, I may just have to re-envision it. Some griefs are unfounded. A lot, what I hear a lot is, "Gosh, I'll never have grandchildren." And one thing you need to know as a parent, you know probably already, but whether or not your children have children, is always their decision, right? I mean, there are heterosexual couples out there who never have children. They just choose not to. So, there is no guarantee. And there are many, many LGBTQ couples who adopt, who have their own kids, who use in vitro, or surrogacy, or whatever, and they have grandchildren. So, I wouldn't make an assumption. This is always your children's decision, and we'll see. You can also continue to hope that they have a good life and closeness to the family. All those things don't have to change. And finally, I think this point about fundamental hopes and dreams, who've always endured, that you hope for love and happiness in the future, career success, that you have an opportunity to travel and share experiences and holidays together, none of those things have to change. Grief can be transformed as you begin to realize, you just have to do a little re-envisioning. Blame and guilt is a common emotion. It often comes out of this, gee, why did this happen? From a blame point of view, a lot of ways to lay blame. Sometimes, we blame ourselves, we may blame the other parent, we may blame somebody else. And you hear things like, "What did I do wrong? How did I fail?" Or, "You've always spoiled him or her, this is your fault." And then, you often hear, "Who did this to you?" And they're wanting to blame a friend, or a partner, or some other young person they're connected to. Blaming the child sometimes, and we may not even realize we're doing it, but, gosh, they changed, how can they change on me? It's causing me to have pain, and I, you know, I have to face all this new, this new set of feelings and ideas. And it's, it can be very difficult to deal with, but it's important to be aware that you're doing it, and really think back to what's causing it, and find a way to code. Guilt is another thing that happens, and this comes interestingly in two versions. One is guilt about all the hardship that may be in the future for your child or for your family. And another is guilt for not being there to help earlier. And I hear this a lot from families, where they say, "I'm just, I'm so sorry that they struggled alone for so long. How could I not have known?" And that's another kind of guilt, that you just have to work your way through and start being better by being the parent that they need now. Fear is probably the most common recurring emotion, and this is one I have a lot of personal experience with. And many fears are realistic possibilities. I mean, it's not that things won't be hard, but it's an even more important reason that you've got to... that you've got to support one another and really navigate all this together. There's lots of fears, this isn't even the complete list, but being afraid to be open, to break the silence, fear of being judged by family, friends, your church, fear of losing connections that you value, fear of hardships that the children may encounter, and this is certainly a realistic fear. We've got to know that there is hatred and violence and discrimination, and that they're going to encounter some of that. Sometimes fear can be justified, and if you sense that someone is going to be hostile, it's not inappropriate to remain silent about your child's identity, particularly if your child wants to be silent about it. It's not necessarily a bad thing, but I think it's important to know, this is only if it's supportive of what your child wants. Your child gets to determine who knows and when to tell, because they're going to bear the results. So if this is something they like, and I'll give you an example, I recently talked to a family where one set of grandparents knows, and they're very supportive, and the other doesn't know, and the child doesn't want to tell them, and they don't plan to ever tell them, because they want to preserve that relationship in whatever format. But that's individual. It's important to know, though, that when a family is not open about their child's identity, it's sometimes called the second closet, I don't know if you've heard that phrase, but it can be a good thing when the child needs privacy. But if it's not that, if the child doesn't want it, if it's because you're uncomfortable, then it's, can be viewed as a silence of shame, and that is very corrosive to your relationship and very wounding to the child. It's really a path you have to walk with your child, and let them decide, how do I want to, how open do I want to be about this, and with whom do I want to be open? Anger has a lot of sources, and these are just a few, you know? Mad at ourselves because we didn't know, mad at God for allowing this to happen, that's pretty common. Embarrassment, because things are going to be tougher, especially in a religious community, if you get rejection or condemnation, that can be very hard. All these things. And then later on, once you become more accepting, I find, I can get very angry over a slur, or a joke, or a depiction in the media, or something hateful that somebody has said. So anger is one of those that you'll bounce back into over and over. But it's important to deal with your own anger and not direct it toward the child. You know, it can be difficult to be angry, but find what helps you. Find a counselor, a journal, find a support group. And the last thing I would say, and this is one that a lot of parents find, is over time, maybe that anger becomes energy, and you become more aggressive in supporting your child or working, I mean, I found a strong family out of a sense of anger in part, and frustration, and wanting to change things. So deal with your anger, don't direct it at your child, and find some healthy outlet for it. Go for a walk, or a run, or something that helps you. Then a point that parents can come to too is self-realization, is the understanding that I'm the one that has to change, not my child, and I need to learn all I can, I have to really redraw my picture of my family, and find a good, healthy one that I love again. I have to support my child and the family they have or will create, and I'm really enjoying that part of it right now. You have to surround yourself with other loving parents and friends. I want to just pause, and I've not said too much about this, but it's really important to find a nurturing faith community, and there are some in the United Methodist Church, and you're in one here at this event. But the worst rejection a child can face, according to research, is rejection by the parents, by the family. The second, if they were raised in the church, is rejection by their church. So if you're in a church that is not accepting of your child, I, I know it's hard to leave a congregation you've been with for years, but every time that child goes there, they are, they know where they are, I promise you. And the risk you run, and I see this a lot, is children who come completely separated from their church or their spiritual foundation, which to me is a catastrophe. And then the other thing about self-realization is you start to focus on daily, constant ways that we can show love and support, and I don't know if I'll have the chance to do it, but I have a whole nother presentation about how many ways you can show support for your child, whether they're completely in the closet or they're completely out, and how you can help them every day as you go forward. One point I want to make is that not everybody in the family, they come to this understanding at the same pace. So, but it's important to know that every person who does show acceptance and support makes your LGBTQ loved ones safer. Sometimes siblings get there first, or a mom or a dad, and then other family members come along. But every time one more person shows support, that makes it safer family connection, a safer place for your child. And finally, acceptance. This is where you find balance, and you just, you don't even think about anything different than what your child is, you just are really balanced and loving them for who they are. And I think it's important to know that this family support creates this really safe space for them to build a good life, become who they are. They've got a team on their side, someone's cheering for them all the time. And we always need, whether we're a child or whether we're an adult, we always need those things that parents can provide. We need their love and encouragement and understanding, we need their connection, and we need their hopeful view of the future. I want to talk just a minute about getting to acceptance. There's a disconnect sometimes when a child comes out, because they've, they've been working on this for years, and for the parent, it may just be sudden. So there's kind of a different place that they are, and there's some research, I footnoted it down here, that shows time is a really important factor, that what you want to do is be loving and supporting as you can, even if your emotions are in a mess, and that over time, acceptance grows. And they found in studying a number of families, that it's about two years before families get to, just, they're, they're just there, right? They're, they're really getting to be okay with it. So don't be shocked if it takes a while to get there, it's not abnormal, but there's a lot you can do in the meantime. The other thing is, it's really important to know that that acceptance increases over time, and even after two years, it grows and grows and grows. So it becomes deeper and deeper, and you get past that, and then, pardon me, emotional disconnect, where the child is feeling relieved as they come out, and parents are just beginning to understand. It takes time to process that, and also, there's, I mentioned about fear, but, you know, I found that was one I got into a lot, because we are very aware of what they may face. My daughter is in her 30s now, but she said to me not too long ago, I thought you worried way too much as a parent. But she said, now I understand better, because we are maybe more aware of what they may face. But also, you completely rebuild your, your view of the future and your hopes and dreams, and that's, that's a lovely thing to have. I want to really emphasize that whatever struggle you're in, wherever you are in this, that support can come sooner, that you can provide love and safety and parental commitment while you're wrestling with all this. And whether or not that child is public, there are so many things you can do to show support. That's another topic for another day, but I just want to say, you can support from day one as you work through these emotions, and also, just be aware, I want to touch one more time, that you can be thrown back into it, like, my daughter came out when she was in middle school, and I was, you know, it took a while, I got, got that into my belt, we're doing well, then she goes to high school, and I got afraid again, and then she started dating, and that was a whole nother worry. And then she went away to college, and then she started working, and, you know, all these things can throw you back into an emotion you had before. But I will tell you, every time you work your way out of it, and every time you find your balance, and do what's best for your child, it becomes easier and easier and easier. I love this quote from Dr. Phil. You can be your child's anchor, their safe place, don't ever drop your end of the rope. And I think that's our most important role as parents and family of LGBTQ. And I hope this material might be helpful to you, and I'd be more than glad to take questions. And I don't know, I'll leave it to you, Emily, if we want to stop recording at this time, or let it go a little further.
Thanks, Janet. Thanks for sharing. I, if you don't mind, you can go ahead and un-share your screen, that way we can see more faces. And I am going to head, gonna go ahead and stop the recording, so thanks for all those who have joined us. We do have one more session on the 29th, where you can come and join us. These recordings will be on our YouTube channel, so you can find it there. But thanks, everybody, for the conversation today, and we look forward to more.